So I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:30 and we'd like to start the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the
The United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And welcome everyone and celebration of excellence. Good evening, everybody. I am very excited for tonight's celebration of excellence and I am delighted to see so many parents and grandparents and family members here to celebrate our award-winning students. Tonight, we're going to start with the CAVE Student Leadership Awards. One male and one female student from each school in CAVE member districts are eligible to receive the CAVE Student Leadership Award. These students exhibit leadership skills based on the following criteria. Willingness to take on challenges, capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and ability to honor a commitment. So our BCS female award winner is Olivia Bevins. Congratulations, Olivia. The eighth grade team was very pleased to nominate Olivia as recipient of this year's CAVE Student Leadership Award. Over her three middle school years at BCS, Olivia has grown into an incredible leader among her peers. Most recently, taking a major leadership role in two different food drives conducted by BCS. In the middle school period marked by COVID restrictions, this is just a step along the way for a young woman who never quits. Throughout this period, Olivia has demonstrated leadership in many other ways. Academically, she's always been a leader and an exemplar for her peers. A three-years-honor student, she has won several awards for her academic effort and achievement. In sports, she is a three-year soccer player at BCS, winning an athletic award for her performance. She's played softball in community leagues and is currently pursuing rock climbing as an outside activity. She further demonstrates her leadership skills outside of school as a five-year member of Girl Scouts of America. In all, Olivia's accomplishments demonstrate a drive and determination to do her very best, and she serves as the role model for all. Olivia, congratulations to you and to your family for this amazing award. Olivia, if you would like to say anything, please pop on and feel free.
Thank you so much. Like, this means a lot to me and all my teachers have really helped me throughout this year, especially Mr. Lambert. He helped me organize the food drives. Me and my friends all are really proud of what we've been doing. Just thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We're very proud of you too. Great job. And our male BCS CAVE award winner is Logan LeDoux. Logan is the team was very pleased to nominate Logan. His academic ability speaks for itself as his name is consistently found on the high honor roll. In his class, he's his quiet confidence does not go unnoticed by his teachers and his classmates. Logan works well on projects with all students and is able to lead by example in ways that his peers respond well to. His favorite subject is social studies because he enjoys learning about the past and how those decisions have formed our current society. He also prides himself could I ask everybody to put their things on mute? Thank you. He also prides himself in his ability to work through challenging assignments and to not procrastinate. His teachers state they can count on Logan to be focused on the task at hand and ready to thoughtfully respond and participate. It is qualities like these that make him an asset to everyone who works with him. Outside of the school day, Logan loves sports. He's an integral member of BCS soccer, basketball, and baseball teams, allowing him to further hone his leadership skills. We're proud to have Logan represent the eighth-grade class of BCS as the CAVE Student Leadership Award recipient. Logan, congratulations to you and your family. Well deserved. Would you like to say anything? Logan, I can't hear you. I think you were trying to say something. I'm gonna give you a second. It looks like Dad's trying to fix it. A little bit.
I want to say thanks for recognizing me and I want to say my teachers have helped me a lot through all of this.
Great. Thank you very much, Logan. Congratulations. And now for our high school award winners. Emily DiNunzio and Daniel Bachan. So I'm going to talk about Emily first. Emily is an intelligent, highly motivated, and altruistic student with unlimited potential. She excels academically and has made significant contributions to Bolton High School and the surrounding community. Emily's success as a student is built on a firm foundation of strong intellect, curiosity, courage, hard work, and perseverance. She is a model student who is not afraid to be the lone voice to offer a thoughtful response to an open-ended question or be the first to volunteer to help others. While it is true that Emily is a terrific student, her resume also depicts extensive participation in athletics, clubs, and community groups. She has presented BHS throughout her high school career in cross-country, basketball, and track. She has served others through her service with the National Honor Society, where she is a regular volunteer to multiple American Red Cross blood drives. She's tutored others and volunteered her time to raise money during the Bolton Scholarship Fund's annual phone-in. In the community, Emily is a positive force through her widespread volunteer efforts in support of Special Olympics, the Bolton Congregational Church, the Bolton PTA, and the Bolton Recreation Center. These qualities and more make Emily a very deserving recipient of this award. Emily has been accepted to Springfield College's Physician Assistant Program and is planning on attending this fall. Emily, congratulations to you on this award. Well deserved. Congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to say thank you.
Well deserved. Daniel Bachan, our other CAVE award winner. Daniel excels academically and has enveloped himself in every aspect of Bolton High School. He is one of the special individuals who has and will continue to make significant contributions in his future field of study, workplace, and surrounding community. Daniel has worked tirelessly to balance a rigorous course load and is reliable and consistent participant in many clubs and activities where he is quickly recognized by his peers and advisors as a natural leader. He has attained high levels of success across all disciplines and in the process has become a fixture on the high honor and honor roll at Bolton High School. His contributions to the Bolton High School community mirror those in the classroom. He enthusiastically participates in extracurricular activities and service to others. He served as secretary, representative, and president to the class of 2022. He facilitated a donation drive for Ukraine and is an editor and designer of the school yearbook, an artist, a tutor, and a mentor. Daniel's creativity goes well beyond his art club participation. Thinking outside of the box, he facilitated a well-received virtual pep rally during remote learning. His strong leadership qualities are evident in all that he does. These qualities and more make Daniel a very deserving recipient of this award. Daniel is planning on attending a four-year university to study computer science. Daniel, congratulations on this award, young man. Very well deserved. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, of course. So first, I wanted to thank my parents who have also been who've always been amazing and supportive of me. I'd also like to thank Ms. Cordero specifically for her amazing advising of student council. She always had a knack for pulling students who kind of didn't have the confidence to make it to kind of pull themselves forward, but she found me freshman year, pulled me to the front row, and here I am today. And I'd also like to thank Sarah Sontag, who will also be getting an award tonight. She's awesome to work with and we spend a lot of time working on class fundraisers together. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Our next honors are for the CAPS Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent's Award. This award is presented annually to one male and one female student from the graduating class of Bolton High School. The award is presented to those students who show a strong commitment to academics and to their school community. Their efforts over the past four years are always very commendable, as well as their academic record, unending list of activities, and commitment to promote school spirit, combined to form a very impressive resume that is required for this award. So we also have award winners from BCS for the CAPS award also. So for BCS, I'm pleased to announce Elizabeth Hannan and John Callis are our winners and congratulations to them. So I'm going to talk about Libby first. Libby Hannan is one of the recipients of this year's CAP Student Leadership Award and well deserved. She's a highly motivated, incredibly hard-working young lady. She can always be counted on to be an active participant in class, always engaging in class discussions and activities. Moreover, no matter if the task at hand is challenging, Libby always tries her hardest. Her perseverance is both admirable and something that her peers strive to emulate. Aside from her strong work ethic, Libby is genuinely a very nice person. Peers feel comfortable in her presence and her teachers appreciate her positive disposition. She's always willing to lend a helping hand to a peer in need and can be counted on by her teachers to add positive energy to any classroom. Libby extends her positive energy and disposition as an active member of the robotics club. Libby's teachers are very proud of her and so are we and are honored to be able to recognize her with this award. Libby, congratulations. Well deserved. Would you like to say anything?
Um, thank you to the teachers who nominated me and thank you to Mrs. Lee In and Ms. D for helping me.
Great. Thank you. Congratulations. And now on to John Callis, our male recipient of the BCS CAPS award. John is a hard-working young man who brings positive energy wherever he goes. He is kind and polite, not only to his peers, but also the faculty of the entire school. John can always be counted on to do the right thing and to help those around him even without being asked. He can often be seen working with other students on their academics and helping on their assignments. John has earned various recognitions throughout his time at BCS, including two Physical Education Awards, a Science Award, and a Soccer Award. He participates in soccer for both the school team and on teams outside of school. He also helps out at his church and has attended Greek schools since kindergarten. John's big heart and radiant energy is notable among his peers, making him a perfect candidate for this leadership award. Another way that John leads is through his willingness to advocate for himself and others. Through this, John has built positive relationships with his peers and teachers. John's teachers and all of us are very proud of him for earning this very well-deserved award. John, congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
I would like to thank my classmates and my teachers for supporting me through this and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Great job. And now on to our high school recipients. Sarah Sontag and Joseph Griffin. So I'm going to talk about Sarah first. So it is with pride that we recognize Sarah Sontag for this award. Sarah has thrived both academically and in her extracurricular activities at Bolton High School. She's not afraid to seek constructive feedback and is always willing to assist her peers and her surrounding community. Sarah is an excellent student, engaged in every class, particularly through her insightful questioning of lesson content. In recognition of her strong transcript, Sarah was accepted into the National Honor Society as a sophomore. Her teachers confirm the strength of her application in the service, leadership, character, and academic pillars of the organization. Sarah volunteered in the tutoring initiative and supported four annual blood drives for the American Red Cross through the National Honor Society. In fact, her passion for the medical field inspired her to join the American Red Cross High School Leaders Program. Through this initiative, Sarah manages donor and volunteer recruitment and is the site coordinator for BHS on the day of each drive. Under Sarah's guidance, we have exceeded our goal for pints collected each time. In addition to the blood drives, Sarah has served her peers as student council representative for the past number of years where she assists in planning school events, fundraising, and community activities. She's also been a mentor to new students at BHS through the Bigs and Littles program. These personal qualities and actions make Sarah Sontag deserving of this recognition. Sarah plans on studying medicine specifically in the field of pediatric oncology. Sarah, congratulations to you for this well-deserved award. Well done. Would you like to say anything? Mr. Misselli, is Sarah on? She is. There you go, Sarah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Sarah.
Just wanted to say thank you to everybody, especially, like Daniel said, it's been a pleasure to work with you over the years through student council, organizing everything. Also, thank you to all my teachers, especially Mr. Turgeon, through guiding me through National Honor Society and the Red Cross and all the budget rights. But thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Well deserved. And last, but certainly not least, our final recipient tonight for the CAPS award is Joseph Griffin. Joseph is a young man who is an excellent student, hard worker, and is a helpful, kind individual with a wonderful sense of humor. His transcript not only depicts success in rigorous honors courses, but if you ask teachers to recommend a student to speak, give a tour, represent school, or just lend a hand with a project, inevitably, they will tell you, "Go find Joey." His talents and altruistic nature far surpass the classroom. During a time when many found themselves leaving the public service fields, Joey did the opposite. He pursued EMT training and soon found himself responding to local emergencies. Pushing himself, both physically and mentally, he responded to emergency calls where he had to tackle his own personal fears and emotions to tend to the needs of others. Joey tirelessly trains to prepare himself to better support the Bolton Fire Department and surrounding community. From schoolwork to attending multiple hours of training learning fire apparatus, a ladder truck, to fine-tuning his natural mechanical abilities, Joey has gained the reputation as the go-to guy in his tech ed classes, the drama club stage crew, and the firehouse. He has the innate ability and supportive personality to help others when systems fail. Joey's planning on studying paramedicine and fire science after graduation, and we congratulate him on this much-deserved honor. Joey, congratulations to you and your family. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, just thank you to all the teachers and everyone that's supported me throughout high school. It's been a really quick four years and graduations coming sooner than I anticipated, I feel for all of us. So, but thank you.
Yes, it is, and congratulations. You're very welcome. All right, that concludes my report this evening. Sorry, I had to unmute. Do we have any comments from the audience? And I'm on my phone, so I might need some help recognizing if there are hands up. Is there anyone? No. I don't see any. No. Okay, so moving on. Do we have any additions to the agenda? We do not. Okay, so I'm going to need a motion to approve the minutes from the March 10th Board of Education Business Meeting. Thank you, Scott. Thank you.
Second that.
Okay. Any discussion changes? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes as recorded, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion for an approval of the March 24th Board of Ed Special Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Rhea.
Second that.
Thank you, Diana.
Any discussion or changes? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? That motion is carried. April 4th, I need a motion for the April 4th Special Meeting to approve those minutes as well.
So moved.
Diana.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any changes, comments, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstaining? All right, that motion is also carried. Now we have Board of Education Committee reports. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met yesterday and there's sixty, sixty-three percent versus has been expended thus far compared with last year of sixty-four percent. I think you'll generally, many of the transfers were just what you'd expect this time of year, but there are some, some that I'm sure Superintendent Heck will go into greater detail, so I will turn the meeting over to the rest of this to her.
Thank you very much, Rhea. So we had a shortfall in some electrical supplies that we needed a reclassification for and some tool expenses, a reclassification, reclassification to cover a shortfall in the propane account. Cost propane went up. Reclassification to cover an instructional supply order at the high school. This next one I'd like to talk about is in regards to special education. This does not have to do with our current potential changes in special education that will result likely in a deficit in special education. This has to do with reallocating funds within the special education budget to match the correct lines with regards to whether it's tuition to other districts, to private schools, out of tuition to ed agencies. So it's just a reclassification of those monies to the correct places within the sped lines. And then we had the transfer that the board approved last month of the $35,000 in benefits to operations to cover a portion, a quarter of the failing blinds at both schools and additional funds for the bleacher repairs and the gym floor finish, which is being done this coming week. So we're excited about that. We had some reclassification to cover some special education tests at Bolton Center School that were needed. There was a slight increase in the rental for the AC units that are going in in May. So we had a reclass there and a reclass for software program shortfall, reclass to cover a science textbook that was adopted last year that we were finally able to get our hands on. Reclass to purchase additional library books because there was less of a need for online services. A reclass to purchase additional science instructional supplies that were needed. A transfer from social studies to English language, English language arts to cover some shortfalls. Transfer from art, foreign language, and social studies to PE health to cover some new teacher supply requests. Because we do have a new teacher and there was some need for some different supplies. And reclass for continued for masks for band for those students who wish to avail themselves of it. And a reclass to cover the cost of doing the BCS gym floor as well, which is happening this coming week also. And and then we have a reclass from online subscription services to purchase library books, a reclass for athletic supplies and projected travel shortfall. Or no, and cover projected travel. I apologize for the athletic director. Additional funds to cover FCS grocery store trips, a reclass to purchase some math classroom instructional supplies, a reclass to cover music purchase of some head professional headphones. The next one was an emergency transfer. As I have shared with the board, we have an issue with the septic system at Bolton High School. It was overflowing, so we had the company come out. They had to do an inspection. They had to pump out everything. That was phase one of the repairs. Then we had a phase two was to inspect, locate, record, and diagram the leaching system that also supports this system. We are now waiting for the report on what we need to do to fix the entire problem. John did not have it as of this afternoon. I want to make the board aware that currently in Kappa, there is $12,000 left over from the window replacement at Center School. That project is done. Jim Rupert will be taking that to, I think it's a subcommittee or maybe the full Board of Selectmen next week to reallocate those funds towards the fix of the septic system. While it won't cover all of it, it certainly is going to help us because I anticipate there will be some more significant costs to fixing this problem. So I was thankful that Jim Rupert and Jill found that information and are bringing that forward for us. We had some reclass to purchase some social studies supplies and to purchase some instructional supplies for PE. Questions on, oh, there's more, sorry. Reclass to purchase art instructional supplies, a transfer from business to athletic supplies to purchase some athletic supplies and a pitching machine and transfer from computer instruction, math, and business to FCS to purchase a convection oven because that oven failed and was not repairable and we needed to replace that oven. Questions for me on transfers? Okay, hearing none. Rhea shared that we are projected at this point at sixty-three percent expended. I do want to call the board's attention to the next page, particularly with regards to special education. In that you will see that currently we are projecting a shortfall of $98,443. We did have some savings in ESY that offset what we believe will be $122,438. This is all still very much in flux. These numbers are volatile and I can't tell you with 100% certainty that these are what the numbers are going to be when it's all said and done. They could go down and they could go up. So at this point on the next page. A little bit further down, please. Thank you, Jess. We are looking at a projected balance of $122,500. The board has committed $50,000 to the Board of Finance towards next year's budget and that's currently leaving us with a revised projected balance of $72,500. I am not comfortable this evening suggesting or making a recommendation to the board about providing additional monies towards next year's budget. However, having said that, I asked at last night's Board of Finance meeting, what is the last possible date? However, having said that, I asked at last night's Board of Finance meeting, what is the last possible date that this board can make a determination to move forward additional funds and that date is May 5. So I I will suggest that we, we may have to have a special meeting if we are in a position where I have enough information to be able to say that we can potentially discuss the board giving more money towards next year's budget. So I throw that out there. I don't know if it's something we want to settle on this evening or if we want to just try to pull everyone together in a quick amount of time once I have more information.
Any thoughts, discussion on waiting until Superintendent Heck is more comfortable with this number?
I think it's, it's a good idea to wait until we have all the information and as long as we can, we all agree that we can get together before it makes it. I'm good with trying to set a date now if you'd like, or we can wait and try to coordinate later.
Either is fine with me.
I agree.
I do as well. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, it would be helpful for me. Thank you, everybody. If we could try to maybe set a date now, something that we're sure that everybody can do and in the end, if there's no change, then we can cancel that meeting. So potentially May 3rd, could that potentially work?
That's good for me.
May 3rd works for me.
I could do that.
I could do that.
Could everybody do noon?
I can do noon, yeah.
Was that a no?
I cannot.
Okay. How about a four or five o'clock?
That's fine with me.
It works.
I can't. Well, it would depend on how quick it is.
I can't either unless it's quick as well, a four o'clock.
Okay.
Five o'clock, I could do that.
How about a three o'clock?
I can do three.
I'll be on the road, so I'll just be on audio. It's fine.
Three o'clock's fine.
So, and Ria, can you? Okay, all right, so why don't we say three o'clock on May 3rd? And that will be a special meeting. And if in fact, well, we'll call a special meeting and then we can take it from there as, as we get closer. Okay, thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. So we will need a motion, Mount Chair, for, to approve the transfers, please.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the transfers?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers.
Thank you, Ria.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, miscarried. And approved? All right, we had our BHS.
Before we, I'm sorry, Sue, before we move on, I have one more thing to share under Finance with the board, if I could, please. Um, there is going to be a special town meeting that is going to be called for Tuesday, April 19th at 6:30 PM at Town Hall to move money within the Kappa budget. This meeting is being called to reallocate the $69,100 that were in previous Kappa budgets that are, that is sitting there from the Board of Ed door lock replacement, which was allocated for a security grant matching funds in the Kappa minutes. That needs to be changed because it's, we did not receive the grants that we applied for from the state for security grants for this project. So because it talks about the matching funds in the minutes, that needs to be changed and they, the town has checked with the auditor and this is the process that has to happen. So they're going to be looking to address an amount for the door locks, which is turning out to be far less than what we thought it was going to be based on what we're doing. And to have the remaining balance, which is approximately $30,000, to be reallocated to the Bolton High School garage that was partially, that is going to be partially funded in next year's Kappa as part of our request. So I just wanted to make everyone aware, and if you could attend the April 19th town meeting at 6:30 in Town Hall, that would be great. That's all I have. Thank you.
So that's intended to be an in-person meeting?
It is intended to be an in-person meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, that's it. Oh, now we're onto the BHS student reports. Yes.
So does that, when, when, when there's an in-town meeting at Town Hall, does that mean that everybody has to attend? Or are they going to continue a hybrid?
I, I don't know what their plan is, Ria. My understanding was that it was at the Town Hall. I didn't hear anything about hybrids, so I don't know. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
We can probably we can probably get more information on that as we get closer.
One, well, I will certainly, as soon as we're done here tonight, I will send an email to Jim Rupert. If I get an answer, I will forward that on.
Thank you. All right, now, BHS Student Representative Report.
Hi, um, seniors have capsule, capsule presentations are on April 21st and everyone right now is working really hard on their presentations and some of us still on our projects a little bit. And we're also receiving acceptances and many of us are starting to commit to colleges. Latin Day will be happening for the first time in three years and Latin students have a option of going on that, which is on April 28th. The girls' basketball team made it to the state semifinals of the state tournament for only the second time in program history, where we lost to Thomason. Outdoor Track had their first meet yesterday and everyone did really well. A couple of athletes qualified for the NPLC and state meet. And there are also a few records broken, which is awesome on the first meet. Softball won their first game against Canton on Tuesday and they played their second game. First away game today against Coventry. The golf team also has their first match on Monday against Stafford at Stafford.
Thanks, Sam.
Hello. Hi, Mike. So juniors recently took the SATs and we should be, be receiving the scores hopefully pretty soon. And we're also preparing for the NGSS Science Test, which is scheduled for after April break. And then chorus, concert, and percussion and jazz band have all concerts officially scheduled for next month. And hopefully those will be able to happen and those will be a success. We're also selecting our courses for next year and there's quite a wide variety of courses for us to choose from. Jazz band is actually having a meeting right now and Donut Club is scheduled to meet tomorrow.
Thank you. You guys feel free to not stay because I know you got stuff going on.
That time of year, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, do we have any community meeting reports?
I do. I attended the Bolton Scholarship Fund meeting yesterday. We are in the middle of our annual fundraising period. Getting ready to hopefully bring in lots of money to give away on graduation to our graduating high school seniors and kids currently in college. So if you're waiting to start an application, now would be a good time to do so. Just make sure they're in by May 3rd. The other news from Bolton Scholarship Fund is that we have agreed to be one of the main sponsors of the Bolton Summer Music Series this summer in recognition, in honor of it being our 50th anniversary. We thought it would be a nice way to give back to the broader community and will also try to be present at each of the concerts with either food of some sort or an activity of some sort. Just to help make those evenings a bit more special. That's it.
Thanks, Chris. Is there anyone else?
Just so if I could let the board know that I attended the BCS PTA meeting on Monday evening and presented the board's budget and the PTA unanimously voted in support of the board's budget.
Excellent. Good news. Thank you. All right, Superintendent of Schools report.
All right, first I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. G. R.
All right, good evening, everyone. Upcoming event, end of the year, BCS is in the home stretch of the school year. Next week is spring recess and I have to be honest, the staff and students are extremely excited and looking forward to it. I can also say I am as well. Soon after break, starting on April 25th, we have smarter bounce testing and NGSS. We are still planning many of the end of the year events with a little asterisk saying contingent on COVID metrics being good. In-person events in the school during the school day that involve visitors are still not happening. We're monitoring everything closely as we plan end of the year events such as the academic awards, class night, and eighth grade promotion. The staff and administration is also starting to plan for next year. This includes the development of the master schedule, class placements, and other important logistics that we need in place before our summer work begins. I'm gonna thank you and I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Saffron about Color Week.
Struggling to unmute tonight. All right, well, it is Color Week here at Bolton Center School and it is a school-wide event. And this week, so there are three competing teams. There is the red team, the blue team, and the green team. And the way we have it structured, structured, each team has one grade level representation. So it's fun to see everybody across pre-K through eight. Even, even the special teachers, the specialist teacher and the office staff each represent a team working together to earn points. Um, and we have different themes. So on Monday, we celebrated Sports Day. Tuesday was Color Day. We had Wacky Wednesday. Thursday was Match Day and tomorrow we are all looking forward to Beach Day. So we are very excited. I've just a sampling of some cuteness that is happening in our building.
Thank you both very much. On to Ms. Johnson, Christine.
Yes. Hi, good, good evening. I'd first like to start by thanking the Bolton Booster Club for providing fan buses so our students could attend the girls' class S quarterfinals and semifinal state tournament basketball playoff games that took place in March. Although our girls did not win, they played their hearts out and our fans represented Bolton well. The scheduling process has begun at the high school. Mrs. Destiny has met with our eighth grade students to assist with course selection. Both Mrs. Destiny and Mr. Jen Santi are meeting with our grade nine through 11 students and they're reviewing the scheduling process during their English class. Once all the course requests are finalized, the building process begins. Students will have their schedule by the close of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. So now on to our 2022-2023 budget updates. I'd like to inform the board that the Board of Finance will be finalizing to the extent that that happens, the 22-23 budget to send to public hearing. By finalizing, I mean something to send to public hearing on Tuesday, April 19th. The public hearing will be at Town Hall. They have to finalize it on Tuesday, April 19th at that meeting. The town, the public hearing will be at Town Hall on Tuesday, April 26th. And going back to the special meeting that I talked about earlier, I reached out to Jim Rupert and he said that it is an in-person special meeting on the reallocation of those funds because voting is difficult with an online venue. And that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any unfinished business?
No.
Nope. Any new business?
Resign. Yes, we have some resignations. I'd like to inform the board that BHS Social Studies teacher Stacy McGowan, BHS Math teacher Micolino Galley, and BCS Power Professional Mia Malloy, and BPS Cafeteria Worker Victoria Sirgano have resigned. I would like to thank them for their service to the Bolton Public Schools and wish them well.
Thank you. Is there any future business?
Not at this time.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for adjournment. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Scott.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition, any opposed, sorry? Any abstentions? All right, it's carried. We're journeying at 7:16. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice evening.